Now, it's being streamed on the broadcast like normal. So you can go in and go into the website and hit it in your open chat. Yeah. Just like before that time. The shutdown time. That's it. You can start. Okay, you start the recording or any time you want to start the meeting at 6:00.
Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of March 8th, 2023, our first in-person meeting in three years. It's good to be back. We will start tonight with a roll call.
Commissioner Tsai?
Here.
Commissioner Woodberg is absent tonight. Commissioner DeFever? Vice Chair Amir?
Here.
And Chair Williams?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yes. I am, before I turn to the oral communications portion of the agenda, I just wanted to remind the commissioners and others to speak into the microphone.
And to make sure your mic's on as mine wasn't.
Let's, before we get to the noticed agenda items tonight, is there anyone present who wishes to speak to anything that's not on the noticed agenda? This would be your opportunity. All right, seeing that there are no takers, we will move to the commission and, I'm sorry, the staff briefing.
Good evening, Commissioner. It's sort of nice to be here and see all of your faces. Has been a long time, so welcome, everyone. So what I wanted to talk about tonight is just that, to let you know that the next meeting, I will be bringing to you an amended ADU ordinance that will respond to the newest Assembly bill. And so that'll be coming to you next time, as well as the mini cows will be back. So that's going to be your next agenda. And also, as part of that agenda, we are going to discuss, and it's not on here now, our meeting time start. That is why tonight says it's a special meeting, because we're using the same meeting time that we did during COVID, but we do have to reset that through adoption of a resolution, which we will bring next time. And just so you know, the housing element has begun its circulation with the state for the second time. That began on February 16th. We anticipate them taking the full time to review that, and so that looks like a May 1st that we'll see those comments back. We'll be meeting with them in the interim to see which way they're going. The general plan 2040 EIR will begin circulation on March 16th for its 45-day circulation. I'll be sending out the notice of availability. You should be receiving one as well with a link for that document. So that's sort of the briefing for tonight, and with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. I have, if I may, I'll start with a question about the next meeting. So we'll have three items, two fairly significant items on the agenda, and will that be in the meeting that's in two weeks?
Yes, that'll be the March 22nd meeting.
Great. Thank you, and thank you for the housing element update as well.
You're welcome.
Important. Any other questions? No? Okay. Let's turn to our action item here, which is a review of the minutes of November 9th from last year. I know Commissioners Amir and DeFever were absent for that meeting. Any, are there any, were there any, Commissioner Tsai, any comments or edits?
I have no comments or edits, Chair.
Nor do I. I thought they were excellent minutes, really comprehensive. Given, how many folks do we need to?
I am double-checking that right now.
Thank you.
If you just could give me a second.
Thank you. We did get on the record that they were fantastic minutes, whether or not we get to move them forward.
I had to, I had to rack my brain to remember some of them and look at the tape as well, so.
Yeah.
It took a little bit of time. Usually do them much sooner, but it has been a while since we've met, so.
I'm being put on the spot, just.
That's okay. No, no. I am.
I would think that the answer is if we have a quorum, we don't otherwise.
Yeah, I'm just, that is what my understanding is. I'm just trying to count, make sure I'm right.
Right. That's my memory from when this last came up.
As we, as we wait on the, can we go back to the March 22nd for a second? I might not be around, but there is a quorum.
Are you on? Is your microphone on?
Yeah, I might not be around on the 22nd. I just want to be sure that there is a quorum.
Twenty-six.
Twenty, no, two weeks.
For the 22nd, I believe we will have a quorum for that date, I hope.
And it is a majority of those voting, so we're okay to proceed.
Okay.
Okay, great, great. Well, I will move to approve the minutes.
I'll second your motion, Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
I'll abstain as well.
Right, the motion carries. So let's turn to the public hearing items. We have one agenda item tonight, and that relates to 165 Av. Anita Miraflores, a request to amend a precise development plan to create a new secondary building unit. Do we have a staff report?
Madam Chair, before we begin.
Oh, yes, thank you.
I'm going to recuse from this matter because I am a downhill neighbor from the applicants. I'm a couple houses down, so I think I'm within the zone of interest for purposes of recusal. So I will be recusing and not participating, nor have I spoken to members of the commission or staff about this particular matter. So I will leave the proceeding unless Mr. Flushman tells me otherwise, and then I think because this is the only public hearing item, I shall not return this evening.
That is correct.
We will not require that. Yeah, thank you so much for reminding.
Everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Well, wait until Commissioner Tsai leaves the room, and then we'll hear the staff report on this item.
I already noticed the items. Thanks for letting me know, Chair.
Okay, no problem, thank you.
Great. Okay. When you're ready, we'll hear the staff report.
Just to clarify, tonight's item is about creating a new secondary building envelope for this precise plan to legalize an existing pergola, which was referred as a gazebo by the current applicants. This gazebo was permitted for a design review approval in 2007 to be constructed at its location that is outside of the building envelope for this parcel. This gazebo was approved as an open-air feature with no weatherproof roof and walls. The gazebo is considered as a landscape feature in the zoning code and is allowed to be in any required setback at that time. Over the years, improvement have been made to this gazebo, which include weatherproof roof and walls. An open-air gazebo is now conferred to an accessory building, which triggers this application to create a secondary building envelope. This parcel is recognized as Lot 6 in this precise plan area that was developed in 1975. Any structure shall be located within the prescribed building envelope. As a as-built secondary building is located outside of the existing building envelope as noted, that's why we are here tonight. Just to give you a sense of the general goal for this Mariflores precise plan area, the goal of a building envelope is to allow adequate space for development while maintaining lateralized landscape area around each parcels. The building envelope in the precise plan does not only include flat dimensions, but also include vertical height restrictions with the intent to preserve views from others. The proposed secondary building envelope appears to meet these general goals in the precise plan, with a maximum high elevation that would not exceed 15 feet tall and with a landscape envelope to be maintained around the parcels. So what could be included in a secondary building envelope? It will allow potential developments of accessory buildings, patios, deck, retaining walls, pathway, stairways, or any exterior features that is accessory to the main drawing units. If the secondary building envelopes create, projects that typically require design review, such as this as-built secondary building, will need to go through a separate design review process. Staff received late mail for tonight's item, which was distributed before the meeting, from 163 Av. Anita Mariflores, which is the budding labors on the left, right side of this property. So we are here to answer any questions, and the applicant is here to have a presentation to describe their proposal.
Terrific, thank you so much. So this is an opportunity for the commissioners to ask questions of staff on the staff report. I have a few questions, but I wanted to invite my fellow commissioners first to ask questions, if they have any.
Sure. I have a question. Could you just, the history of the gazebo, just in terms of how that usually works, in terms that we're grandfathering in basically a situation here?
So in this case, the gazebo was legally allowed in 2007. It was approved as an open-air structure with no weatherproof walls and roof.
Okay.
And because of the improvements over time, which was not legally permitted, and they convert this gazebo into an accessory building, which have walls and roof on it.
Okay, so is that, is that the current applicant?
Yes.
A related question, I think, to that. I had an opportunity today, Commissioner DeFever and I, to visit the property and also a neighboring property to kind of see different perspectives. One thing that wasn't clear to me during, you know, going into that visit, which I think I'm hearing tonight, I just want to clarify, is that what's, what would be allowed, allowable within the secondary building envelope is structures that are accessory to the primary residence, not.
That's correct.
Yes, okay.
That's correct.
So patios, the gazebo, not an, one could envision a second building, that's not the, that's not the.
Yeah, so it's the accessory buildings. It can be a tool shed, it can be any small structures.
Not another residence.
That's correct.
That's correct.
And those would, and even those accessory, even those accessory features or structures would need to go through the design review board?
It will need to go through a typical design review process, depending on the scope of these accessory buildings. It may go to the board.
Understand. Okay, so it could go through staff, it could go to the board.
That's correct.
Okay, that helps clarify, when you had said in the staff memo that it may go, it will go through a design review process.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
That was basically my question. I was going to ask, where do we get the secondary building envelope definition? Is that written somewhere? Is it in the materials? How delineated is that?
So each precise plan area have different wordings on a secondary building envelope. In this precise plan area, there wasn't any secondary building envelope created in these three lots, which you were about to see in the applicant's presentations, so.
So it comes from the precise plans for each residential neighborhood or whatever you want, however you want to.
That's correct.
Do we have the precise plan so that we can look at that lang, well, that language doesn't exist?
So that language really doesn't exist, and in these three lots, it wasn't really standardized in that manner, and we found that in quite a number of the plan development areas, that the secondary envelope isn't so, like, you have to have a 10-foot setback and you have to have a, you know, I think that's what you're looking for, whether or not there were development standards. Not always. It's not a standard application for those.
And, and the commissions and eventually the town council may define what could go into this secondary building envelope.
But I, so I, so currently, there's nothing that, other than you telling us tonight, that only minor structures can go into this. We don't have anything in writing anywhere.
That's typically what exists in other precise plan area, but not in this one.
Interesting.
That is somewhat standard, so you have the main building or the primary building envelope for your residence, and you have your secondary envelope, which allows you to do such things like recreational areas, barbecues, like what Christie was speaking about, and gazebos that are open-air. So it's more like looking at landscape features and an outdoor recreation area versus where your primary residence is. And I think most of the, I shouldn't say most, but a majority of the precise plans have both primary and secondary envelopes. Not every single one does.
Understand, okay. But it's sort of like, not a term of art, but it's understood that a secondary envelope is accessory to a primary.
That's correct.
Kind of by definition.
Exactly.
Okay, and then the last question, did you have any other questions? I had one, just follow on.
No, go ahead.
It was just, I understand that, you know, because there was sort of some improvements or changes made to the gazebo, that this sort of led us here to this application to kind of address that fact. Just out of curiosity, was this, you, I know, have reviewed this, I think with the applicant and in your expert opinion, kind of see, saw this as a, did you entertain any other ways of dealing with that fact pattern?
So the applicants proposed to have a secondary envelope, and that's their only proposal.
I think what you're asking is, did staff look at something different?
Yeah, contemplating.
Being that this is a plan development area, it would be the most logical application for us to look at, which would allow for the property owner to develop within another part of their, their yard, within the same specifications that we do for all secondary envelopes.
Okay.
So we didn't really look at whether or not you want to do setbacks or coverages because of where this is situated.
Right.
Within a plan development.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much, really helpful. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Great, well, we will let, allow the applicant to make a presentation, and you have up to 20 minutes. You don't need to use the entire 20 minutes, but we look forward to hearing from you.
Good. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Michael Heckman, a local architect, and I'm honored to be the first live Planning Commission hearing in three years, so. And I do want to say that we have reviewed this in great detail and believe that our application has a lot of validity and is sympathetic to what the original development was meant to be, and also is respectful of what the neighbors' issues might be. I believe, I wasn't at this meeting originally when the owner was aware of how the gazebo was not in compliance with the local regulations. She met with the planning director and with Christie, and at that point, it was recommended that we pursue this procedure. So I was brought on board to document that, and I'll walk you through a number of exhibits here that I have. They start at different scales and then get to be more detailed as we go along in the process. The first slide is the, oh, this is the parcel map for this area, for this neighborhood. The middle lot, number six, is 165, is the lot in question.
This one here? And, oh, that's me.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
And I'm shaky. I'm just a nervous person by nature.
There also is a pointer on that particular one that you have, Mr. Heckman.
Oh, there you go, yeah.
That's the lot in question.
It's a nice, steady hand.
So it was recommended that we pursue the secondary envelope in order to formalize the existence of the gazebo and address the issue of it having been enclosed and become a more protected storage space. I have a box on the right there with the lot areas for the different parcels, just so you can sort of keep track of how they relate to each other. You can see that the parcel number six, which is what we're pursuing tonight, is one of the bigger parcels, and then that's followed by number seven to the east, and then number five on the western side, which is slightly smaller. This is actually the subdivision scheme for this property. You can see that the, the building envelopes are starting to show up here. We've got the same kind of color scheme as we had on the previous slides. I didn't include any of the other parcels on Geldert. It just seemed that the concept for that cluster of lots was totally different and much denser than the area that we're dealing with, with these few lots, and it didn't seem to be relevant to the review, and as a matter of comparison, was not really a good reference for the project. This is actually that same three set of lots at a much larger scale. You can see that item, or lot number six in the middle, is the area that we wanted to create the new secondary envelope for. It's one of the biggest lots. It's not completely covered. It has quite a bit of open area, and I've got some calculations of what that amount is further along in the presentation. But I've also noted here the envelope areas, which is a point of reference, so that you can keep in mind that the envelopes seem to be tailored for the scale of the lot. The biggest lot in the middle has the largest envelope area, and then lot number seven follows with a slight, a slightly smaller lot and envelope, and then the last lot, number five, is the smaller of the three lots. This gives you a clearer picture of what the various lot areas are, the building envelope area, and then I've also included a line at the bottom now that gives you a sense of how much of the property is dedicated to the building envelope. On lot number six, you can see the 20% notation there. It's sort of a mid-range commitment to the building envelope. Lot number seven, which is a slightly smaller lot, actually has a lot of its property dedicated to the building envelope. And then lot number five, as you can see here, is only about 15% of the lot area. So the size of the building envelopes are pretty well distributed, depending on the size of the property, although I think lot number seven, they've actually had to commit a lot more of their property for the building envelope by comparison to the other two properties. This is the same diagram of the three properties, and we've now included the secondary building envelope. Oh, sorry. So it's right here with that sort of odd geometric shape. This red line, of course, is the leading edge of the existing western side of the current building envelope, and this is the secondary envelope as we've proposed it. We believe that this envelope is a small change, is in proportion to the other building envelopes on the parcels, on these parcels, and is an acceptable area for a secondary envelope. You can see the size of that envelope is 3,700 and change. The sides of the envelope, we do have dimensioned on your plans. You can see that the long edge, I believe, is about 80 feet long. This width right here is almost 20 feet from the adjoining property to 163. And then we have a more generous setback to these other property lines with this secondary envelope that we've proposed. But I wanted to be sensitive to the issues raised by the property owner of this parcel at 163. The total distance of the secondary envelope to that building envelope is approximately 80 feet from this point over to this point. It does strike me that it's a pretty sizable distance and should provide a lot of separation for privacy and maintaining the openness that you're expecting in this subdivision. Here is now all the properties with their areas shown, and we've also included the secondary building envelope. That's this notation here. So I've added the envelope of the original building area to the secondary envelope, and you come up with this figure right here. So I wanted to give you a sense of what the commitment of both envelopes would be on this parcel number six as compared to other properties adjacent to where this proposal is being considered. We are not that far from the size of the envelope in parcel number seven. It's certain, certainly within the range of what you might expect in this subdivision, and I believe is a good change that's respectful of the neighbors and also is providing a good solution that's commensurate to what the subdivision was, its original intentions Regarding the neighbor at 163, I wanted you to see what the distance and vantage point is between the two properties. This is actually a photograph from the main residence on lot number six at number 165, looking to the west. So you can see, this is the residence at number 163. This, of course, is the real interest of what is primary in the view corridor, looking to the west. There's quite a bit of vegetation here between the two properties, and I believe the privacy is preserved substantially from the two, between the two buildings and the two houses. And then the final slide is actually a shot from the gazebo, looking over toward the residence at 163. So the, the vegetation that you see between these two parcels is fairly dense. These trees, I presume, will fill out when they get their spring leaves, and it will be a completely separated element visually to preserve the privacy of these two parcels. But in fact, the outlook from the residence is actually a more difficult privacy issue for the two neighbors and how they view each other than it would be from the gazebo. And I believe that's my last slide. Yes, okay. So that just gives you a sense of what the two properties are like relative to each Our secondary envelope is still a modest size, I think, has good separation between my client's property and adjacent neighbors' properties, and I think is a good change that addresses the problem with the gazebo, gives it some validity, of course, makes it a part of the property in a more substantial way, and. validity, of course, makes it a part of the property in a more substantial way and formalizes its approval. We, of course, realize we have to go to the designer review board after we have our hearing with you, but I believe we proposed an envelope that's respectful and is addressing the issue about the gazebo. The height of the envelope, of the secondary envelope, is 15 feet and the gazebo is below that limit by about four inches. So it does respect the height restriction on the envelope and I believe is the right kind of solution to make sure that this gazebo is formalized and properly processed. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Sure.
And for putting together this slideshow for us. Any questions for the applicant?
Not at this point.
I have one question. I'm wondering if you could go back to where you were first showing the secondary building envelope, that graphic?
Okay.
Yeah. It's just, having been out there today, I appreciate that the perp, so the secondary, the genesis really was the changes made to the gazebo.
Absolutely.
That's really what brought us here today. And so you've kind of designed the secondary envelope around that gazebo to legalize it. Were there any, did you, did you look at any other, so I appreciate sort of the general configuration.
Right.
I am wondering if you looked at any other possibilities? Again, having been out there, if you, if you look, you know, because this is, this is landscaping and minor structures, you're not so interested in that orientation towards the, towards the view of the city necessarily?
Uh huh, right.
Or the bay. Did you look at extending the envelope out, farther out, away from five? Any other configuration that you played with that would still embrace the gazebo?
Well, the gazebo, yeah. The gazebo is sort of dead center.
Right.
In this shape. It's a perfect square, basically right here. And the margin from it to the upper boundary right here is similar to the margin here on the lower side. It is possible that this line could move away from this parcel and still preserve the gazebo as part of the secondary envelope. So that's the only other thing that we considered as soon as we saw the letter from the property owner at 163.
Right.
Because the owners of this property and of the gazebo, their really only objective is to formalize the gazebo and make sure that it's proper and legal. So we can still do that and have a smaller envelope.
Right, right.
Perhaps it's a concession to the neighbor would make her feel more comfortable about what it is we're proposing with a little more distance.
Well, and I, and another, just, you know, just in my mind, and I'm just, just to share that, the sort of A thought that I'm having, which is, is it, is it indeed the best, you know, envelope to the extent you want it, there are other things that need to happen, accessory to the primary dwelling?
Right.
Or is this only to legalize something that probably shouldn't have happened in the first place? And so I'm just wondering, you know, it's looking at the broader, longer-term land use issues. That's one thing I've been, you know, that's sort of, that I'm thinking through in addition to having seen it from now, from being out there today to see it from different angles.
Right.
Better understand the landscape.
I know that the ADU issue is becoming much more important and the state certainly
Right. Policy goals of.
Pushing that as an option. But we haven't considered that as part of what this secondary envelope would accommodate. I mean, it could, but the owners have no intention to build anything else and really just wanted to make sure that the gazebo was accommodated properly. If there was an ADU, I think it should really actually be behind the residence.
Right, yeah.
And not in a side yard.
Right. Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Rear yard would make more sense.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, these are important questions because while we understand the the current intentions of the, of the current property owner.
Right.
That property ownership changes, plans change. So, you know, and so I just wanted to get your kind of expert, you know, insight into envelope placement.
Right, right. We didn't want to propose too much.
Right.
To make sure that, didn't generate too much controversy.
Right, right.
We just wanted it tailored to the gazebo and make sure that it was properly processed.
Right. And so an ADU then would fall under the secondary, sorry?
The ADU is a different beast in itself.
Yeah.
Because this state law.
Yeah.
Will override any of our primary or secondary. So there would be a four-foot rear and four-foot side.
Right.
And now with some of the new legislation that has become, coming to you, which wouldn't pertain to this, has to do with front yard setbacks, but wouldn't pertain to this site at all. But, so this secondary envelope would not be necessarily kind of a constraint if they decided to do an ADU because state law would, and what we're going to adopt as part of, what we have adopted and what we will hopefully adopt again with recommended modifications will support sort of the placement of an ADU on any of these lots in the rear of the structure.
Okay. But this particular envelope could accommodate an ADU within that footprint?
It, it most certainly could accommodate it. It just wouldn't restrict it.
Exactly, yeah, I understood, yeah.
In other words, if the property owner of either five, six, or seven wanted to do an ADU on their property, as long as they met our development standards, the envelope itself would not constrain it.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, okay. Okay, interesting point.
So we wouldn't have to change our secondary envelope to accommodate an ADU. It could be anywhere on the property as long as it meets the minimum setback standards and.
Right.
Whatever else in the ADU.
And the ADU would have to go through, of course, a design review process.
The ADU does not have to go through a design review process.
How could I have forgotten that?
It has, they do have ministerial process through the building department and there are development standards.
Exactly, exactly.
As part of our ADU ordinance that they have to comply with.
Yeah, so that's actually an interesting point. When I talk about design review process, there is some, it's not through DRB, it's not through the commission, it's not through a board, but there are standards that would apply to the construction of an ADU.
That is correct. We have a list of standards that they have to comply with.
Yes.
But it is all done as a ministerial process.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
We are going to, I'm going to open this up to the public.
Sure.
Public hearing for anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, and I believe there is. And how are we doing, oh, yes, well, have you come up? Did you, there's no podium. Come up and when you, and, and if you could state your name, speak into the microphone, state your name for the record and I'll time you. We have three minutes to speak.
My name is Viruzi Hariri. I am the owner of 163 Avenida Miraflores, which is lot number five apparently over there. As you could see on my letter, this proposed plan they have, it will definitely impact our privacy. We, from our bedrooms, we could see right through their gazebo area, which they have enclosed illegally. And now they are planning to keep it that way by expanding their envelope. So my understanding is once they expand their envelope, they could build, or they could keep this building that they have built as a gazebo, which was supposed to be an open space, now it's all covered and it's, it's a room with windows, sliding doors, everything. So I am just trying to stop that. And I have no objection to, for them to expand their envelopes, but I would like him to, to move it to, toward, in the back of the lot. As you could see, they have a lot of space available, which they could easily do. And, or just get it closer to their building, their primary building, rather than expanding it right to my property line, which means the gazebo that they have built will be within their, their building envelope. And in the future, they may want to use that, I don't know if they will be able to, I mean, that's a legal question, would they be able to build other enclosed space in, within their pocket at that time, within that envelope? If they are, then that will create a lot of problem. They mentioned also that, they call that gazebo right now, they call it storage area, storage space. Storage space usually doesn't have a sliding door and a window and enclosed like that. And I'm totally opposing that, that notion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
I actually.
Oh, did you have a question?
Yeah, I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Viruzi, would you mind coming back, yeah, for a question?
Yeah, I just, a short question. So is your, is your objection to the, the fact that there's a gazebo there, or is your objection more towards the secondary envelope?
Secondary envelope, which includes, which will be the gazebo within that area. So if they move it up, therefore that gazebo area, gazebo building.
So your, your objection is to the location of the gazebo currently?
Currently, exactly.
Is that your objection?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. If they want to move their envelope to more higher location where that gazebo will stay as a gazebo, not as a room, which it is right now, I have no objection to that.
Okay.
They could put their buildings on the other side.
And I think one clarification or just when we, in, just in the use of language, it really no longer is a gazebo.
Exactly.
Right.
It's a room.
It's more like a, it's one, it's like a, it's a.
Small structure.
A small building, yeah, a small building.
Small structure.
Viruzi, how did you feel about it when it was still a gazebo?
Gazebo was fine. Gazebo is an open space and they only had the roof and four pillars to hold the roof. That's, that was it. So I had no issues with that. I still don't. If they just remove the walls, we'll be fine.
And the, the walls bother you specifically why?
Because it's a room now. They could actually live there or stay there or spend all day long there. Whereas a gazebo, you don't really spend time there. You only go there a few hours when it's nice and sunny or something, but not in winter when it's raining and all that. There's not a living space. Gazebo is not a living space.
Right.
But right now, this room that they have created, it is a living space.
Thank you for delineating the difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'll give the applicant an opportunity to speak in response if, if you'd like. And you have five minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Well, the gazebo, whether we call it a storage building or an outbuilding or a shed, I think still has a valid purpose on this part of the property. And I think maybe what's more relevant to the discussion is what's the proper distance between two buildings? I mentioned that the space or distance between the envelope and this building envelope at 163 is at least 80 feet. That's a, quite a generous distance. And there's an elevation change, too, which creates a separation, anyway, the, the visual separation and the impression of more distance, too. I think we've done a proper job of defining a good envelope to make sure that the gazebo is given a, the kind of, you know, relevant use. As a storage unit, it's in a good location and it's convenient to the house, which it should be. So, and I've, I've never seen any kind of exhibit or clarification from the neighbor about where the bedrooms are or if there's some visual connection, either photographically, between her bedrooms and this building. I don't, I don't see the issue.
Okay.
I don't think it's been documented properly. That there really is an issue.
And you haven't, you had not had an opportunity to visit or didn't ask to visit.
No, no, I was not able to visit her property.
We did have an opportunity to do that, to visit both properties today.
Oh, okay.
So that was, that was very helpful, actually. And amazingly, well, I'll speak to that more later, but a question on, and, and not that this is necessarily directly relevant to the issue before us, and I do appreciate that's the building envelope issue, but it is, the reason I raise it is because there was, there was work done without the proper, you know, that didn't happen in the way it should have. I know there's no intention to build out, to really build anything now or, you know, anything. Is there an intention to complete the current, the current state of the structure is sort of semi, it's in, it's in a, it, it looks like, there's exposed wood, there's no finishing, you know, on the structure itself. Is there any intention to just fix that? Yeah, that's really for the home, the landowner, yeah.
It will be finished out. It'll look like it's part of a development for the house.
Right, okay, okay.
It'll have similar finishes.
Okay.
Similar color and it'll look like it's an accessory to the main house.
I didn't have an opportunity to ask that question today. And so we did talk about, you know, intentions more around other improvements.
Yeah, we realized the designer review board will get into those kind of details.
Exactly. And that would go through some sort of process, yeah.
And the building department's going to require that it have all the kinds of systems for weatherproofing and roofing and.
Right.
And it'll be built to, you know, high-quality standards.
What you see as a first step to.
Right, yeah.
Completing that project.
It'll look good. Is that your question?
Yeah. Yes, yeah. Right now, I definitely, you know, I understand it went up quickly and, and it's not finished, clearly, yeah.
Yeah, the owners realize that they made a huge mistake by moving ahead with this kind of simple improvement that they didn't realize was not legal, but they do want to legalize it now and they want to make it look good and, and make some use out of the space.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for clarifying that for me. Anything else before we close the public hearing? Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, thank you all.
Sure.
For both making time for us earlier today and for coming this evening. So I will close the public hearing and I'm going to bring it back to the commission for an opportunity just to deliberate. And is there anyone who would like to jump in with thoughts? Commissioner DeFever?
Yeah, I'd like to start with, I do have photos of our visit today and as Mr. Heckman pointed out, if you haven't seen the view from parcel five, it's quite surprising. And I'm, I'm not sure the proper method, but I'd like to pass this down, at least to my fellow commissioners. I, I'm happy to give you copies of it or.
Yes, what I will need is copies of that for the record, but you certainly can pass them.
I, I will open it to the one, the view from the neighbors, since we don't have that. Let me make sure I open the right one here. Let me make sure I open the right one here. There's a few, so I'll open it to the first one, and then swipe to the left, and you'll see from, from the yard. So, the usable yard is just in front of the home, and the, those are the bedrooms, the windows that are on that, on that side of the home, those are all bedrooms. The bedrooms are all on that side of the house. So, you can see in this first photo, there's a little white building in the background, and then-
So, this would be the upper, that five, uh, lot five facing lot six.
And just for anybody paying attention at home, or in the crowd, these, these photos will be made part of the record.
So, these are photos taken by Commissioner DeFever on a site visit today that we're in, viewing, and will, as, will incorporate into the record, so that's the gazebo. Do you want me to swipe forward?
If you can email those to the senior planner, um, Kristi Fong, that would be helpful.
And it would also be helpful to continue describing what you're looking at while you look at them.
Yeah, so I'm looking, we're looking at, um, a view from, there's a deck off of a, a, a bedroom in, uh, a, a part of lot five here, this residence on, on lot five, um, that looks out across the yard of lot five, what you can see in the, the pie there, um, towards lot six. And it looks directly at the gaze, the, the structure that was a gazebo and now is just a, a building. And we're just looking at those various shots of that view. Um, so, I think we've all had an opportunity to look at that.
Yeah, and to add to the description, the usable backyard, i- i- this is deceiving, because a lot of that is a ravine and areas that are not used on lot five, but the usable space of the backyard does have some fruit trees in it, uh, right outside the deck from the bedroom, and then it faces the, the current structure that used to be a gazebo, uh, next to building six. So, I mean, I can speak for myself, I was quite surprised, because from building six, it really looks like, and we saw the pictures that Mr. Heckman put up for us, it looks like, you couldn't imagine why there would be an issue for the homeowner of lot five, because it's, uh, very screened, it appears very screened. But then when you go to the house for, uh, lot five, it actually, the, the structure, like, pops out, and really does look like it's looking in your windows. I was really surprised, very surprised. Um, just wanna throw that in there, and then share the, the pictures, the photographs. So, adds a little bit of perspective from what I saw today. Uh, if you want me to continue-
Sure.
I have some, I have some other, I have questions as well. I wanted to share that first-
Questions for, yeah.
...because I think that guides what we're asking about.
Right, absolutely.
Um, so, under secondary building envelopes, um, I'm, I'm understanding there, there isn't anything in this plan development, and so this is kind of creating something that isn't there yet, which is okay. Um, maybe to help me understand better, so accessory buildings, like tool sheds are allowed, gazebos are allowed, what is not allowed? Like, where are the limits on what we might be deciding? What, I, I wanna be comfortable with what, what we're deciding.
So, in some, I'm, I'm just gonna kinda give a broader kind of answer, and then hopefully be able to wind down to this, but we do have plan developments where it's very specific as to what can go into a primary and a secondary. Um, sometimes it says things like, you can't have a pool in the secondary, you can only have it in the primary, and sometimes it's landscape features. So, I don't have anything that says this specifically can only be X for this particular plan development. I think, and I'm gonna look to the attorney also, you could, uh, look at this secondary envelope and say, this can only be used for these accessory purposes, such as landscaping, um, accessory structures like tool sheds, or, um, pottery, potting bar, or studios, or whatever people use, but not, um, additional residential space. And the only part that might hit you is that if somebody wants to do an accessory dwelling unit in a secondary envelope, there's not much I can do about that, but with respect to expanding the primary residence into a secondary envelope, it would not be permitted, because it is only allowed for accessory uses. Do you have anything to add, uh, attorney?
No, I mean, the, the, the commission does have the ability to restrict, um, you know, what can be built in this area, um, and, and provide some guidance, and, you know, is, what you're doing here tonight, and just to make clear, you're not the one who's approving the secondary, you're making a recommendation to the town council. So, you would be, you could make a recommendation to, uh, condition on whatever the board, or the commission finds appropriate.
So, so just to clarify, I mean, and I think to Commissioner DeFever's question, it's related, if, if I wanted, if the applicant wanted to come with a, and do an ADU, they could do it in the spot without, you know, without going through-
ADUs are subject to a different section of the code.
Without, I mean, because it's state mandated, so technically, they could do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Could, they could do an ADU, sort of technically, kind of anywhere in-
They could do that if they didn't have the secondary envelope-
Exactly, exactly.
-designated for themselves.
So, in a way-
Provided they met the standards allowed within the accessory dwelling unit ordinance.
Right, so whether or not we, whatever we do here tonight, the ADU option is out there, provided they meet those ADU.
And, and that's an important factor, is that they'd have to meet that. We have not looked at what would take to meet that at this particular lot.
Absolutely, absolutely, understood.
And/or is that in front of the board, the commission tonight?
Yeah, we understand.
Yeah, but, so we can recommend to the council if we so chose some, some conditions, additional conditions, what, beyond what, what conditions that are not currently in the resolution as drafted.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, so, um, yes, can, continue, Commissioner DeFever.
Uh, yes, I think I have another question, let me find it here. Um, I think I know the answer to this question, but I think it still bears a little bit of discussion, especially since I could be wrong, and not remember the answer to the question. We can, we can recommend, how to put this? We can make recommendations to the design review board on the approval of the structure, but they, it's, it has no, um, we, it has no immediate effect on them, right? So, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, so, wha- what you're, what you can do, um, you know, in, in sixteen, in municipal code sixteen five two oh six oh, is what governs the precise development plan. Within that are, you know, principles that you would wanna consider, um, for what, you know, approving a project, or denying or modifying an application, which is sort of what you're doing, what you would be doing if you're gonna condition it. Um, the, I guess what I'm trying to say is, you wouldn't be necessarily telling the design review board how to, uh, process an application, you would be giving limitations or restrictions on your condition, saying it can only be this type, or something of that sort. Uh, that, that's sort of what I'm, you know, you wouldn't be talking directly to the design review board i- in, in some ways, I, is my, my understanding. Uh, maybe I didn't answer your question?
No, I don't think that's the-
I do think it's important, if I might, just say what the process is tonight. So, what you're going to be doing is looking at this envelope, saying, is this the size? Is this the place?
I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna ask the applicant, I'm sorry, if you don't mind, it's hard for us to hear. Okay, thank you.
So, you, you see the delineation as the proposed boundary? That delineation, you, you're going to recommend, or not, that area be used as secondary envelope, and that within that area, it is accessory dwelling, which is what was, um, provided to you within the staff report? With respect to the design of the gazebo, that would go before the design review board, that would not be what is before you tonight. That's, that's how we look at what the action is.
And this wouldn't even be the time to, to make, to the extent we had guidance, it's not here, we're not, that's not happening tonight.
With respect to the design?
Just to the, the section, the, that you had referred to, where there, it sounded like, that, in other, in situations, there's an opportunity to provide some guidance, but we're not at that place tonight. We're, we're looking at the location of the building envelope-
Correct.
-the building envelope. Um, the, I think the reason we're struggling, to be honest, is that it feels like, it feels like an, not a great precedent, that something happened, um, a structure's built, it really shouldn't have happened, and now we're kind of, we're trying to remedy that. Um, and so I, I think that's part of why we're, you know, just wanting to make sure that we think about this and talk about it, and, 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 and because, having been out there, you know, in all honesty, the view from the primary residence, it looks like the lot five is so far away, you would, you would, it, it really does, it looks like there shouldn't be any issue, it does feel like far away. Then when you go to the residence at five, it feels like it's right there. Um, and it's just two very different perspectives, and they're just different. Shocking, as, as Commissioner DeFever said, sort of shockingly so, you're, like, surprisingly so. Um, and so we're just wanting to make sure that we're thoughtful tonight, and that's why we're asking these questions.
Sure, yeah.
Does anyone have a perspect, a, a, sort of a sense of what we want to say?
Yeah, um, so, yeah, so to move things forward, I guess. Um, so, I mean, this is a tricky situation, because I, um, we're, we're, in a way, we're dealing with something that was, um, I would say, bad behavior to start with, that, something that was not legally built the way it should, and we now need to come to, to, to deal with this. And I apologize, both the applicant and, um, and lot five, that I couldn't come out to see, um, you know, to see the properties from, from both sides. Um, the, you know, my sense is that, um, I don't really see, I, I mean, I guess there's two questions here. One is, um, should the structure, should we, in a way, accept that the structure of the, you know, the gazebo, the structure of what we're calling it, should be staying in the same place or not? And the second is really the, the envelope. I think that despite the fact that, um, you know, the, uh, we put, the applicant put walls around it, um, you know, that structure has been there for quite a while, um, I think it's, um, somewhat, in my perspective, somewhat unreasonable to actually move that to a different location. They, I think that's an unnecessary cost for the, for the applicant to, to approach that. And I don't really think that the, actually, the envelope is the issue here. I mean, so it's a trapezoid, it could be a different type of trapezoid, um, it's really the issue that, um, lot five sees, you know, sees the, the, uh, sees the structure. But I think that with recommend, recommendations to town council, and the fact that we are looking at something that is eighty feet, um, you can do, I think, a fair amount of things from a vegetation perspective, to, um, that would fall on lot six to do, um, in order to block that view. Um, and true, that goes to design review board, you know, DRB obviously is the one who deals with the landscaping and the approval, uh, but given that there's such a big distance, uh, because usually, we've been dealing with sometimes things that are far less than eighty feet, and, and even though that you can see the structure, I think that there can be things that, that could, um, uh, that could be done to improve the situation.
Thank you. It seems, I, just to jump in, I think that, I really appreciate, um, this is a, you know, this is just one of those situations where it, it, it's tricky, um, and, and just to, you know, we've talked about illegal and, and behavior, and I really think that no one acted in bad faith. I don't think we-
That's right.
-feel that anyone acted in bad faith, it just happened, um, and, and we've got, you know, two different, perfectly legitimate, um, positions. Um, I do, I, I do find myself agreeing with Commissioner Amir, that we are, this is a pretty, there, there is quite a bit of distance, there will be improvements to the current structure to match the character of the residence, the primary residence, and the character of the neighborhood, um, and that better understanding, um, and I think we should maybe consider some recommendations to the council as to, just to provide clarification, that we're talking about minimal, minimal, we're talking about landscaping, and, uh, you know, this, this gazebo now, fitness room is what it is, um, and, you know, minimal improvements as part of this, um, that would be allowed within this secondary building envelope, provide that guidance to the council. But, uh, unfortunately, I think the alternative is to not approve this, and have a, a, basically a landowner that's not in compliance, and that would have to remove, uh, you know, would, would have to return it back to, uh, the structure back to a gazebo. Um, you know, it's, it's a tough one, because you don't want to, um, you know, in, in a way, it was, it was, it, unfortunately, it was, it was the landowner that got themselves into this jam, um, uh, by, by constructing, you know, it, it, enclosing, and, and, and sort of enlarging the structure. But I think that that is, we, again, as Commissioner Amir noticed, we're talking about eighty Landscaping can accomplish quite a lot to protect privacy, um, and, and fortunately, both homes are wonderful homes with incredible primary views of the bay, and, and none of that is impacted. So, I do think it's a sensible approach that Commissioner Amir has recommended, and that I would just, you know, maybe we would talk about, um, providing clarification as to what's allowed, uh, with staff guidance, all of the things that staff mentioned made a lot of sense to me, I don't think we need to overthink it. Commissioner DeFever?
Yeah, I, I would start where you left off. I'd like to see that anything we can do to help allay the, I think, valid concerns of the, of the neighbor on, on lot five. I can completely understand why it feels, it, it's vulnerable, her, her bed is near the door, and you can feel like people are, can see you or watch you. And to me, so, I grew up in a lot of wide open space, and we lived there because we didn't want anyone to be able to see in the windows of our house. So, we run into this problem in Tiburon all the time, where it's relative. Now, if I were the owner of lot five, I would, look how large it is, I would have bought that so no one can see in my windows. Not, and so it's easy to say, oh, in Tiburon, we have so many houses that are closer to each other, that doesn't mean that's right for this neighborhood. That's, I feel very strongly about that, because you purchase your, your lot and your home with certain expectations of privacy, and these are not unreasonable expectations of privacy, it's a huge, huge lot with a lot of vegetation on it. So, I wanna honor that by, as Commissioner Williams pointed out, coming up with some sort of, I, I guess you can call it a compromise, in order to assist in that the homeowner of lot five doesn't feel like, and maybe it's not the case, that, that the owners of lot six are looking in the windows, but like Erica Williams pointed out, Chair Williams, we don't know who's gonna live in these houses for all time, and I wanna protect their feeling of privacy, because they clearly bought this big lot so that they could feel the privacy and protection of a large lot. All that being said, I also agree with my fellow commissioners, it doesn't make sense to have the structure completely moved and torn down. I think I have another, actually, one more question for the, the town, because what it is now is a fitness room, is that something that's typically allowed in secondary building envelopes, or is that something that isn't anticipated at all?
I, uh, I'm gonna defer to the, um, director on, uh, that question. There is something that I think we just noticed, that we do wanna make sure the commission is aware of before, um, we go on a little bit further, we just wanna clarify.
Okay.
So, we, do you wanna, do you want me to do this?
I can do it.
Oh.
Um, so, I just wanna bring up to your attentions that outside of the building envelope, for the primary and the secondary, there is an area called TLE, which is top of landscape envelope. In this precise planned area, there is restrictions for vegetation's height in those landscape envelopes.
Oh, interesting.
So, um, again, it is a measure to protect view. Uh, I understand, you know, there may be intent to, um, require some landscaping to preserve privacy, but they, just be aware, there is other restrictions in this building.
Right, right.
But the restrictions, um, the, I mean, can DRB decide a different restriction?
So, um, on the diagrams here, it talks- So on the diagrams here, it talks about TLE, and there is a maximum gray elevations of 250. It means that all the vegetations cannot exceed that.
And that's from sea level, 250 from sea level is my understanding, yes.
Yes.
We're up there. I mean, I think that we don't have, at least I don't have the capability of knowing what that means in terms of line of sight, of course, but, but that would be something that we could tell the town council, right? And they could, you know, provide that guidance, right, to DRB.
I suspect, I mean, we do know that there currently are tree, there currently is quite a lot of vegetation out there. Some of the trees are dying in the lot five's parcel. Not, not necessarily the burden would be on lot five, but there's, there is, there's enough vegetation that with, I think, tweaks and improvements, you could really do a lot to mitigate any view impacts, privacy impacts. And it's, I would imagine those are all within the, you know,
Yeah, I agree.
Like in compliance with the precise development plan. But to a point that Commissioner DeFever made, you know, we have seen in the staff memo, although we haven't had an opportunity to see the precise development plan, where, where, you know, we trust our staff, you know, implicitly. And there are many references within the staff memo to the importance articulated in the precise development plan to retaining the open visual appearance of the neighborhood and the open views. And so that wasn't just specific to protecting, you know, the primary bay view. That was, clearly, this was a neighborhood that was designed to feel very open and airy.
And I would just state back to some of the points I was fumbling over earlier. Part of the principles were preserving some of those, some of those things as well. So that is why PDP would end up like that.
Exactly. And that's the reason for the landscape, exactly, for those LTE zones. But I think the landscaping that we had in mind, the mitigating landscaping, is really, it is just to sort of, you know, it wouldn't require tall vegetation necessarily.
And it wouldn't block the views of the water, because we're talking about, on the side here of the, of lot. I mean, and it wouldn't block
Right.
The view for, for five either.
But I do think it's important, you know, again, but really clear when you're out there that there are two kind of different perspectives. Really nice homeowners, just on both, you know, everyone we talked to today was just really, really kind and welcoming. So I feel like there's just also a lot to be gained just from having good dialogue.
So I'm sorry, when we, when I brought that up, we were, Commissioner DeFever was right in the middle of a question, and I want to
My, yes.
Allow her to return to that, and she was asking the director about the secondary building envelope.
Thank you. I almost forgot about my question. I was wondering if it's okay to have a gym in a secondary building envelope.
So we would consider that an accessory structure? So it wouldn't be like when you say a gym, it's a little workout studio. There's plenty of accessory studios and secondary building envelopes, so that would not be unusual.
Okay. I suspected that was the answer, but I wanted to make sure we weren't approving something that isn't even allowed in the first place.
Yeah. So how would you, so I think we're reaching consensus that, you know, we're moving forward to approve this with some additional guidance for the town, or recommend to the town council that they approve it, with some additional guidance that they consider, you know, being explicit as to what's allowed within the secondary dwelling unit. We've talked about these studios, you know, landscaping, sheds, those sorts of things. And I think that's where we are. I don't think there's anything beyond that.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Is there anything from the town that we need to clarify more, or?
Well, I would ask what, if our planner understands what the
The guidances.
Yeah. And, or if maybe, maybe a little more detail, and at some point, we, we, we need to be able to articulate your findings well enough.
Absolutely.
And if they, if they're simple enough, that we can do it now. If there are more details in it that you want to ask us to bring one back, I mean, that's sort of where we're at.
Yeah, I was actually thinking that it might not be a bad idea to just have something brought back with the benefit of your thinking on this, because I, you know, we're not, you have better, much more expertise in terms of what, what, what would you, what would we want to see in this particular community? So I think that would be, I would be in favor of bringing something back to us for review, just based on the discussion that we've had today.
It's in the form of a resolution.
Exactly, just in the form of a resolution.
Yeah.
And I, yeah. And we don't want to belabor this. It's not to, you know, it's just to, because we think you'll have with, you know, be able to sit down and just come up with a couple sentences that make it really clear. And then, because I think otherwise, we'd be, we'll be throwing out all kinds of, you know, kind of be talking in a vacuum in a way. I do want to say that I think we can all find it categorically exempt from CEQA. I know that's another thing that we need to find.
I'm going to look to the attorney, but I think what you're asking is to continue this, to bring back a resolution. So we're not recommending any type of action with respect to, I'm using recommending a lot, recommendation to town council, because you do want to see some of the specifics of what you, what we would propose happen, happening in that secondary unit, or envelope, excuse me.
Yeah, yeah. With the primary concern being just the privacy and, you know, privacy considerations, and then also the spirit of the precise development plan that was, that is to retain open views and the open character of the neighborhood.
Right.
And I think that'll be a simple matter to bring back to us. We definitely, it won't be like the ADU issue or anything where we're going to, like, it's just really that, because I think we're all wanting to be clear on the guidance that we do bring to the council, but we all are in favor of moving this forward to the council with the recommendation that it be approved.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that what the chair is suggesting is like, we, we want to move it forward, and we don't want, I guess we don't want town council then and come back to us, you know, for, again, because there's no reason why the applicant should be waiting much, and we should try and get, get the resolution, then hopefully town council approves the resolution.
So my understanding is what we're doing is coming back on March 22nd. We'll need some type of a motion from you?
Yes, I can move.
But I'm just laying it out with those.
Yeah, I can move that we continue the matter to allow staff time to revise the resolution to incorporate some additional guidance to the town council that takes into consideration privacy protection and the precise development plan goals, for lack of a better word, for us to consider at the next hearing on March 22nd.
Okay.
And before you take a vote, I mean, some of the things you were talking about, I heard, you mentioned certain elements about the envelope, but I wasn't clear, at least myself, whether or not you wanted those to be eliminated from the building envelope, or you were saying that those things could be included in the building envelope. And I just want to make sure when we come back, you know, you mentioned the studios or a gym, and about what, you know, what your direction to us is to bring back to you is, so we can articulate that for you.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's a really good question. I think we're, you know, I think we're, we're sort of, it's, it's, this is a bit of working with you as to, in this particular community, we're thinking minimal structures. We, obviously, this is tantamount to a studio, so if we're going to approve this, we, you know, that's something that's allowed.
So I, I wouldn't, I think what we normally see is it's just an accessory structure, as opposed to delineating it as a gym or a studio, or you can have an office, but you can't have a this, because in some ways, it creates another layer of enforcement that ends up happening.
Right, right.
So my, my feeling is if it's an accessory structure, that's not residential, can't be lived in, wouldn't be a full residence, then that's what we normally see within these secondary envelopes with, as well as, you know, things like a landscaped area, steps and stairs, you know, garden retreat, something like that.
But we can say that you, or unless it's, unless it's explicit, that there won't be another accessory unit. This one is 214 feet, that in that envelope, there won't be another one. Or is that clear that, because that may be something that
Right.
We would not want, that if you approve that, that suddenly, they can come and have another accessory unit. If that's not clear, then that should be in the resolution, I think.
Yeah, I do think in this particular instance, given the history as well, we just need to provide that strong guidance.
I think that you aren't precluded from saying one accessory structure. I just, I'm trying to rack my brain and
I know.
Looking to Christie if there's one that says 231, you know.
Well, not necessarily 231, but if, if there's the option that they could do it in the future. And again, the owner might not be the owner in 10 years, right? But if these, if this is what we're approving, there could be. But if we say no, then no.
We're not trying to overcomplicate it. It's just that when, I think what I was hearing, Dana, when you were talking about, some PDP, some precise development plans are really specific, others are not. We've got, we've got a precise development plan that clearly wanted to preserve this open character and open, and didn't anticipate secondary building envelopes at all. So, you know, and so it's, I think that's why I was thinking we could give staff an opportunity to say, how does this compare to other, what's happening throughout this neighborhood? How's it compared, are there ways that we can provide guidance? You may come back to us and say, it doesn't make sense, where it's going to be more confusing?
No, I think we can provide some guidance, and I think some of the precise plans do have secondary building envelopes that are very specific as to what you can and can't do. Sometimes I scratch my head and say why, but they're definitely there. So I think we could do that. I'm just looking to Ms. Fong to tell me, are there any other ones that you can remember that limit the number of accessory structures? Because I can't remember that.
So normally, for the precise plan area, that does not have specific guidance and definitions of what could go into a secondary building envelope, is that any accessory structures still have to comply with the regular zoning. So how the regular zoning development standard work is that it has to comply with high lock coverage for area maximum. So if these outbuildings, could be a number of them, meets those maximum allowable gross floor area and lock coverage for that partials of that size, then it could allow potentially into, into the building envelope. But I've seen other precise plan that has a maximum numbers of square footage for outbuildings as well.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay, so I think that's what we would go with.
That's what you're asking.
That's it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's, you know, because we're talking about what could happen in a secondary envelope, not what our development standards are.
Exactly.
So what I think you're looking to is either a maximum square footage, or a maximum number of these accessory structures within there, and a definition of what those accessory structures can be or are.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think that's perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
So I think the motion still remains, because it doesn't, this was clarifying of the motion, but I think the motion's still on the table.
Yes.
If I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our motion carries, and we will be back on the 22nd with a number of things on the agenda. And I'm going to thank you all again for coming and joining the meeting. And I forgot to do my gavel at the beginning.
If, the, the meeting's over now, so I, I don't want to get us into, yes, I think you should direct your questions to town staff, and we can help you out with that.
We'll help you with that tomorrow, Mr. Hickman.
All right.